Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us. Please stand if you're able to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Rush?
Let's bow our heads as we go to the Lord in prayer, please. Gracious and heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for all that you have done for us, all that you continue to do for us, and all that you will do for us from now moving forward. In this time of year, dear Lord, we ask that you comfort those that are alone. You heal those that are sick and injured. And, Lord, those that don't know you, I pray that they will find you and be able to experience your grace and your forgiveness one day. Be with this council, mayor, and staff this evening. Give us the know-how and the knowledge to make the best decisions for our wonderful community. And forgive us of our sins, dear Lord. In your name we pray. Amen.
I'd like to call our December 5th, 2024 meeting to order. Again, thank you for everyone who joined us in City Hall and online. Glad to have you here on this cold evening, so if we got in time, you can enjoy Mistletoe in Maine, which is going on downtown. So, that's motivation, right? So, we'll begin with a consideration to approve tonight's agenda. Mr. Peppers, I think you have one note.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. There was on item, let me get to it, on the public hearing listed as item 5C for cases annexation, 2409-001 rezoned, 2409-002, and master plan 2409-003, the request to annex rezoning and gain master plan approval for 57 acres located on Oxbridge Highway for residential development. Staff would recommend that county council postpone that public hearing until the first meeting of February as the applicant sent letters out for a public input meeting with a different location than they actually held the meeting, and there was some concern there. So, staff would ask that the public hearing be postponed to the first meeting of February to allow the applicant time to set up an additional public input meeting after the holidays and re-advertise the public hearing for that first night in February, first meeting in February.
Okay. I think that's a good idea. Will we do that as part of the agenda approval, or do we need a separate motion for that?
I would suggest if council's wanting to do that, that council go ahead and vote to postpone that public hearing to the first meeting in February.
Okay. If council agrees on postponing that public hearing to the first meeting in February, is there a motion?
Let's make a motion.
Yes, sir.
Let's make a motion to postpone the public hearing for item 5C, ANNX 2409-001, RZON 2409-002, and M2409-003. Move to postpone that until the first meeting in February.
And that will be February the 6th.
February 6th, okay.
Second?
The motion is second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. All members voted for the motion. If anyone came particularly for that public hearing and would like to depart, you're welcome to. You're certainly welcome to stay and join us for the rest of the meeting, so. Are there any other additions or changes, revisions to the agenda tonight?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Motion. Is there a second?
Second.
The motion is second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. All members voting for the motion. We have a couple of presentations from guests and visitors this evening. Beginning with item A, presentation of check from the Canton Lions Club to Canton Police Department Shop With A Cop. That'll be President Craig Keith and Treasurer George Murphy. And Counselor Tolan, would you, as a loyal Lion Club member, would you like to introduce this item?
Happy to. Thrilled to, actually. Got a couple lions down there, got a couple lions up here. Happy to be present and put our money where our mouth is, as they say, our motto being "We Serve." And so, we're here to serve our community. Talked to Chief a while back. I said, "How can the Lions Club serve?" And he said, "Well, we do this thing called Shop With A Cop. Would love to have you guys participate." So, we decided as a board that we would donate $3,000, and we went out to the community and raised another $3,900, even though the ask was $3,000. So, happy to have Mr. Murphy and Mr. Keith here tonight to present a check to the Canton Police Department in the amount of $6,900 for Shop With A Cop, which I believe, Chief, occurs on December the 10th?
Yes, sir.
We certainly appreciate the support of the Canton Lions Club for Shop With A Cop, which is a wonderful holiday event and support for our community and children. And Chief Farrell, glad you could roll in and join us here, so. Looking good. Keep that under a speed limit now, or we're gonna have to get somebody after you there, so. Okay, yeah, slow it down. Thank you. Slow down going through those school zones, too. Okay, our next visitor is a presentation from History Cherokee, and this is Executive Director Stephanie Joiner. Thanks for joining us, Stephanie.
Mayor and council, good evening. Appreciate the opportunity to be here today to give you an update on History Cherokee. I would like to also introduce our Development Manager, Whitney Spear, and our Education Manager, Katie Yeomans, who have joined me this evening. First thing I want to do, of course, is to extend our appreciation for your support and for making Canton's history and historic preservation a part of your mission. I know that the recent historic district expansion was not necessarily an easy decision, so I thank you for your commitment. As a small token of our appreciation, we've dropped off our annual holiday ornaments. And as this year is the Dean House in Woodstock, we would be happy to exchange that for one of our other Canton offerings if you guys are interested. But I do hope you will enjoy those. The city's partnership with History Cherokee is also greatly appreciated. Community partners are critical to our success, and having the city's longtime support has been important. History Cherokee's mission is about preserving our history, educating the public, and serving our community. And one way we do that is through the Rock Barn. The Rock Barn remained busy this year with over 50 events and almost 5,000 guests. About half of these renters, and presumably their guests, live outside of Canton. The events included two open houses, and we plan to continue this tradition so that the public has a chance to view this historic landmark. Another way we serve the community is to provide information. And thanks to our recent partnership with the city, we now have, we now serve as the Visitor Center. During operating hours, multiple people a day come in for information or to use the restrooms. And the latter amenity is well-used by those visitors at Brown Park. We're averaging about two people a week who visit us to use our research library. They're either a student or a professional writer, or they are researching family history or the history of their property. Our collection of historic maps, photos, and property information are available by appointment, free of charge. We also get frequent requests for technical assistance with historic properties. Two examples here are Brown's Farm on the left and St. Paul's Cemetery on the right. The Cherokee County History Center has now been open two years. It's taken longer than we thought to get the word out, but we're encouraged by recent traffic. During the month of October, we had four school tours. These photos are of Birmingham Falls Elementary in Fulton County. That group had 120 students, and we were also able to use the Canton Theater, so we thank you for that. We offer a lot of student programming, including this Saturday event, all about the flag, which was popular with scout groups. And these photos are from one of our homeschool days, where students learned about the Constitution and met President James Madison. I do want to compliment our education staff on the quality of these programs. We're actually acquiring such a good reputation that parents from Gwinnett, Floyd, and Whitfield Counties are traveling to attend our homeschool events. Earlier this year, we unveiled our newest outdoor exhibit about the Edwah River, sponsored by the Jason Dickerson Family Foundation. We get frequent visitors who follow along the path during the day and learn about our ecosystem. One of our recent collaborations with the city and our Black History Committee was our first historic marker in Burge Park honoring the history of the Stump Town community. We're working hard to diversify our revenue streams and bring people downtown. So, our third fundraiser of the year is our Holiday Home Store taking place tomorrow night and Saturday. As of today, we have 800 people attending this event. So, we're excited and a little nervous. But these fundraisers are critical to our financial stability. Last year, we brought in 14% through fundraisers, but I do expect that number to increase in 2024. Contributions and grants made up the largest portion at 50%, and rental income came in at 24%. Our expenses last year were pretty evenly split, with general administration taking up the smallest portion compared to programs and facilities. And of course, we could have not have accomplished all of these things that I've mentioned here tonight without your support, and we're eternally grateful. In preparing our 2025 budget, we did notice that the budget allocation from the city was reduced, which will impact our outreach. Knowing the city's interest in storytelling, if funds are available, we respectfully request an increase to last year's level of funding in exchange for four new historic markers that could be placed around the city. The partnership would function like the previous opportunity, with the city and the staff collaborating on content and design. We would assume the cost of the signage if the city could handle the installation. The choice of which signs to install would be up to the city, but I've listed a few suggestions here. We could focus on historic communities such as Pea Ridge and Sunnyside, or Native American sites such as the fish weirs of the Edwah River. We do have plans, great plans, for 2025, and to give you a broad outline, I'm gonna turn it over to Whitney.
Thank you, Stephanie. Good evening, everyone. Like Stephanie mentioned, we have a lot of great, wonderful things that are coming up for 2025. And one of the first things that I was tasked with when I joined the team back in May was to create a strategic plan for the organization that had never been done. So, we met in a boardroom for eight hours as a team, and we all came up with goals and objectives for our departments. Each department head was responsible for coming up with at least four core priorities for their department. And then, we all joined together and made it so that it's realistic. I asked everybody to create one plan, that's if money wasn't an object, one if money was totally the object, and then one that was in between. So, we came up with some, with an outline for next year. So, some of our pillars for our strategic plan include increasing organizational and operational effectiveness. We're gonna be doing that by creating more workflows, policies, and procedures, and identifying areas for continuous improvement. We also plan to increase community engagement by forging strategic partnerships with local businesses and educational institutions. And we're gonna really try to expand our outreach. So, sometimes if you hear about things that we do that seem off-mission, it's because we're trying to expand our target audience. Ultimately, by doing so, we're hoping to foster stronger connections with our donors. We're gonna have a long-term donor plan that's focused on building long-term relationships and really maximizing the value of donors over their lifetime. When we are done with all of these things, we're hoping to be able to launch our endowment fund. When I started working here, I saw that there were so many people with passion, and everyone had this passion, but they didn't really have a roadmap. Now that we have one, we are very excited about embarking upon our 50th anniversary for the organization, and we're gonna have lots of wonderful celebrations, and we hope that you'll continue to support us and join us in those endeavors. Thank you.
Did you have any questions?
Thank you. Thank you, Steffi and Whitney. You appreciate your updates and appreciate all the efforts that your organization does to help maintain and preserve the historic small-town character of our city. The number-one attribute, our residents rated recently in a survey. You guys are a big part of that, and we appreciate your efforts and support. Any questions for Mr. Johnson?
Ladies, thank you for that presentation. Would you mind stating for us what the budget decrease was from the previous year? Do you know that offhand?
From the city of Canton, we get 75, in the previous years, it was $75,000 allocated, but we make a $25,000 payment toward the mortgage as part of that, so.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Thank you for joining us.
Thank you.
We have two public hearings to attend to this evening. The third one again was postponed. But we do have two to attend to tonight, and I'm gonna ask Mr. Peppers to give us just a brief overview of the rules and procedures.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. Thank you for attending the city council meeting this evening. Tonight, we'll have public hearings related to zoning cases. Property owners in the state of Georgia have a constitutional right to seek rezoning of their property, including potential annexations of said property into the city of Canton. The city council is required by law to provide an opportunity for the property owner or their designee to apply for such annexations and rezonings as meet legal requirements. Zoning cases such as those that will be heard tonight require an accurate accounting of the proceedings and comments. The hearings are recorded verbatim and will become part of the legal record of each case. To speak during a public hearing, the state of Georgia requires that you sign an affidavit prior to speaking. This public hearing was advertised in the Cherokee Tribune, which is the legal organ of Cherokee County. Signs were posted conspicuously on the applicant property or properties. And under our development code, the applicant provided to the U.S. Postal Service a notice of zoning request to all properties within 1,000 feet of the applicant property or properties. The procedure for the public hearing is as follows. The mayor will ask staff to give a brief description of the case in question. The mayor will then open the public hearing. There is allotted 10 minutes for those wishing to speak in favor of the application, including the applicant, as well as 10 minutes for those wishing to speak in opposition of the application. I will serve as the timekeeper and will notify any speaker at the podium when time has expired. Comments must cease when the time has expired. The applicant may reserve a portion of their initial 10 minutes to rebut or comment on any opposition comments. Once all parties have signed up to speak, have spoken, or the total time for each side has expired, the mayor will close the public hearing. Following the closure of the public hearing, the city council will address staff with any specific questions or discussion related to the case. Speakers will be taken in the order in which they signed up to speak. As you are called to speak by the mayor, please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record. The time will start after your address is given. As there may be several speakers, we ask that you keep your comments concise and try not to duplicate the comments of other speakers. You will address your comments to the mayor and council, not the audience or the applicant. Your comments are in the form of a monologue. The city council will not address comments during the public hearing portion of the meeting. At all times, the audience will be civil. Clapping, cheering, talking, or jeering is not appropriate. Those cannot adhere to these guidelines, may be called out of order by the mayor and escorted from the meeting. Once the public hearing is concluded and the council have finished with any discussion of the case, please feel free to quietly exit the auditorium. You may always email your comments related to the case to comments@cantinga.gov. These comments will be distributed to all elected officials.
Thank you, Mr. Peppers. So, we will begin with our first public hearing. It's a public hearing for cases ANNX 2408-003, RZON 2408-005, CUP 2408-004, and VAR 2408-005. Request to annex and rezon 14.91 acres along April and Lucky Streets for the development of 198 multifamily residential projects, along with a conditional use permit and variances. Mr. Green?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. As the mayor has stated, this is an annexation request, rezoning, and conditional use permit request for 14.91 acres on property located off of April and Lucky Streets. The applicant's intent is to build 100, or construct 198 town condominium units, which will be housed in 11 buildings. I believe all the notification requirements have been met, signs have been posted, ads have been run in the newspaper, and I know that Mr. Huff is here tonight to represent the applicant.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Green. This portion, we will, at this time, we will open the public hearing. And again, Mr. Huff, if you want to present the case, then we'll, Mr. Peppers will start the clock.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Parks Huff of the law firm, Sam's Lock and Huff, and I represent the applicant. I put on y'all's podium this old-school PowerPoint presentation, also known as a paper handout. So, just kind of, for reference, walk you through some of the things that I think are relevant about the property. First off, this is an annexation of property that is in your growth boundary agreement. It's in an area that you've had other developments coming online, and this makes sense to be in the city. So, we think the annexation part is consistent with your goals of expanding the city within, you know, reasonable boundaries, and the properties to the north are also in the city. So, I think this is an appropriate annexation. The piece of property is on 140, and it's just south of the Reinhardt College Parkway Turnoff. It is a unique piece of property in that it is an older area with the very poor infrastructure. The roads, the stormwater infrastructure is non-existent. And so, the opportunity to have a developer come in with enough density to redevelop the roads and put better infrastructure in is important here. This backs up to, it's just north of the housing project, which is directly to our south. We do actually show our secondary access through the Housing Authority property. And to the east is a multifamily project. The, I wrote the name down here a second ago, I can't, River Ridge Apartment Complex is just to the east of our project. So, it is kind of surrounded by other types of uses. And the project is a unique project in that it is condominium buildings. Each building would have 18 units in each building. It would be built over a period of time. My client, Jordan Tench, is not able to be here tonight because his wife is having a baby today. So, he sends his apologies for not being here, but he emphasized that this is something that would be owner-occupied condominiums, and they would build each building as demand comes online. So, it's not something that they would be building all 198 units at one time, probably a five-year build-out time for that. So, this is a unique product that you don't have in the area and is needed when you look at the, you know, just the employment at Northside Hospital and the amount of employment in housing that is needed for that employees in different types of housing. So, this is, you know, first level, you got garages, you also have some surface parking, and then you have elevator and stairs to the other levels. And you have a variation of units from largely one-bedroom units, some two-bedroom units. And they're for sale condominiums, and it's to serve a need for younger and smaller families. When you have an average household size in Cherokee County is 2.75, that's a whole lot of one- and two-person households that need housing, and not all of them want to or can afford a single-family detached housing or even a townhome. So, this is a great housing option in an area where you have, already have, for rent apartments behind us. You've got the Housing Authority property to the south. So, this is a way to bring in some home ownership and be able to improve the infrastructure that if you bend down these roads, the roads need to have to be totally redone and brought up to standards. And the stormwater, there's a creek that runs through there, and it causes erosion and everything. All that will be fixed. So, this is a, an opportunity to bring in, and Mr. Bay, I know you always say, bring in something that we don't have. And this is something you don't have, which is smaller for-sale condos that will be appealing to singles, young people, people just entering the workforce, and older people who want, maybe want to downsize, but don't want the option to not rent, but be a buyer. And so, this is an opportunity to be able to bring that to fruition. We've had good community meetings. I think the, some of the biggest concerns was some of the existing residents concerned about existing drainage problems. And I know they still had some questions and concerns, but the reality is, unless you invest in this area, the existing drainage problems, the culverts of the roads that are non-existent, that will not get fixed. So, this is an opportunity to fix those things. The other question that came up is traffic. And I know that transportation and traffic concerns are always an issue. I will note that this is a higher-density land-use category than further north, which is suburban, which is the Pea Ridge development that recently came through. The, so, this is in an area where you'd expect higher density because the land-use plan is higher than the suburban to the north of 140 or Reinhardt College Parkway. The other thing I wanted, that came out of the meeting that I had not thought about, which is when the new high school opens up, any high school traffic that's coming down from Waleska that now goes all the way down and feeds to the current high school, when the new high school opens up, they will be taking that left. So, there actually will be presumably a reduction in traffic on that section from 140 Turnoff or Reinhardt College Parkway down to 5. So, I hope I explained that, explained that well. But I think that was something that the neighbors brought out that I hadn't even thought about, that I think is relevant, to your point. So, putting people with a housing option that is not available in the city, a for-sale option that is greatly needed, is what we're proposing here. We will comply with all the staff recommendations, and we think it's a good project. Be glad to answer any questions that you have and reserve any time to respond to any public comment.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Huff.
We have 3 minutes and 36 seconds left.
And I can reserve that if someone, I don't know if anybody signed up.
Yes, I'll reserve for you.
We do have one resident signed up to speak. I don't know, Mr. Thomas Weaver. And is that, are you speaking in favor or against?
My comments would be in respectful opposition, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. We'll start the clock now.
Give me just a second. Reset the clock. All right, go ahead.
To the benefit of all whom are in attendance, my name is Thomas Weaver. I reside here in City Limits. My comments are in respectful opposition to the proposed annexation and development along April and Lucky Streets. In an abundance of respect for the legal counsel, Mr. Parks Huff, who is professionally representing his client, he conceded in his remarks to yourselves that transportation concerns are definitely going to be an issue along this corridor of the highway. Indeed, I was present over the summer, and I remember that through your city engineer's professional recommendation to you, this mayor and council accepted the professional recommendation from Keck &amp; Wood for the utility reconsiderations and realignments along the Highway 5 connector along Georgia 140 at Reinhardt College Parkway in anticipation of potential city-led transportation infrastructure improvements. And when you balance the two major pillars of the city's roadmap for success, the creating the great neighborhoods that Mr. Parks Huff's client proposes to do, but when you weigh those against the infrastructure promises that council makes, that's definitely some very definitive competing interests there. I am very uniquely aware of the marginal, of the marginalized community that historically resided within the Pea Ridge unincorporated pocket of our community. This is part of that unincorporated pocket. We've had that conversation during the Pea Ridge public hearing about a month, month and a half ago. This property and parcel, if you look at the map, that's on the monitors, and for the benefit of all the audience members whom are in attendance, if a, if this development were in fact constructed of a motorist who would be making a left, would it be immediately met with that very sharp 45-degree angle turn along Hospital Road leading up to where even more apartments are currently being built that have been approved by the city? And if you make a right, you're gonna reach that bottleneck red light, which as the, Mr., excuse me, Mr. Parks Huff, as he conceded... the, Mr. Excuse me, Mr. Parks Huff, as he conceded, when that new high school gets built out, and when they begin to get the school buses and the traffic to and from the school, which is one of the largest in the state of Georgia, the roads in that particular vicinity portion of our community, which is inside the city limits on that side of the red lights, is going to be at capacity. So again, it's not that I'm anti-development, it's just that I'm pro-careful development with thought well-seasoned on how these things should go out and things not just be tetris in to where they can fit. If the applicant can find a way by and through the legal counsel, uh, of, of the applicant's, uh, ability to demonstrate to council how transportation infrastructure improvements can be made on this corridor, whether that be the applicant's lead and, and, and the applicant's donation to the city, or if they would resign themselves to consider delaying or postponing any further consideration of this until those transportation infrastructure developments can be enhanced, then it might be able to work. But as it sits right now, my concern would be simply for the increased density and increased traffic. Indeed, when you look at the number of units that the applicant proposes to create amongst the whole spread of all of the buildings based on the site plan that's been presented by the applicant, uh, United States Federal Decentennial Census records from the most recent decentennial census rate, as along with Atlanta, um, Atlanta Regional Commission records, that the average household has about two cars, right? So you would be, I'd say maybe one and a half to be fair, a more conservative estimate, but you're looking at between 300 to 400 added vehicles along that very thin, narrow road that currently is there, that leads to that very dangerous intersection with, with inadequate transportation infrastructure that's currently in place. For those reasons, I would ask that this mayor and council please respectfully decline to grant your assent to the project at this time if that should be your will.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver. Would the applicant care to rebut?
Give me one second, Mr. Huff.
She asked me to wait? Go ahead. Okay. Uh, yeah, I, I, I appreciate his comments, and certainly traffic is on everyone's mind. Uh, the reality is, is you have, uh, a lot of employment in the city, which is great. Uh, and by putting people closer to downtown and closer to the Northside Hospital, your employment centers, you actually don't increase traffic because you're putting people closer to where they're going to be living and working a- and playing when they come downtown. So, uh, and I do think that the, uh, that this is a, going to be a five-year project. We will comply with all your, uh, DOT requirements in terms of access off of, um, off of, um, Waleska Road. When that access is on Lucky Street at Waleska, we will have to make improvements, left-turn lane, right-turn lanes, we will make it, be making all those improvements. I also think that a lot of traffic will turn right out of our development and then go right. Uh, so there, there won't be, because that's a way to get back towards the interstate. And if left is a hard turn, harder turn to make, you'll just turn right and then turn right, and you feed around that way. So there are multiple ways to come in and out, uh, and traffic is something that, um, i- is always an, an issue, but I think, you know, the relatively small, uh, unit size, I think, will lead to, you know, relatively small num- amount of, smaller number of traffic rather than a traditional larger home. Uh, if it, if this area developed commercially, you'd have a lot more traffic potentially with commercial development. So I think the need for housing is, 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 is critical. Uh, I think putting housing, for-sale housing close to, you know, uh, existing apartment complex is a great way to, to be able to prevent, provide a, a housing option for folks that, that, you know, would like a different housing option. So, uh, we will comply with all the, Mr. Weaver's comments, we will comply with all DOT suggestions on improvements to the existing roads.
Thank you, Mr. Huff. At this point, we will close the public hearing, and we'll open it up for council discussion and any questions for Mr. Green. Uh, Mr. Green, I just want to confirm in the staff, uh, report, uh, for the annexa- annexation request, that the proposal's not consistent with the comprehensive plan in terms of density and the existing suggested density for the area, uh, is four to six dwelling units per acre, which would be a maximum of 89 units, um, and requested density of 198 living units would provide 13 units per acre. Is that correct, both, those statements?
Y- yes, sir, that is correct.
Okay. And then also can, just confirming the, um, proposed primary access would be off of Highway 140?
Yes, sir.
And then Mr. Huff mentioned, and I think I read, that the secondary entrance is proposed through the, um, uh, Han- Canton Housing Authority development that is existing. Is that, um, secondary in- entrance, or did I read without, uh, emergency access?
Uh, according to his letter of intent, that would be a secondary emergency, ingress-egress point. Uh, they have spoken several weeks ago to a representative of the Housing Authority. I've asked if they've had any more, any further contact, and I've not had an answer to that yet. I believe Mr. Peppers has also spoke with a member of the Housing Authority, and, um, he's been told the same thing, that the applicant had reached out to them some time back, was supposed to get back with some design plans, but they have not heard back from the applicant.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Green. A question probably for Mr. Dyer, um, in terms, as these are being proposed as for-sale, um, condominiums. Um, is there anything that keeps, if multifamily, I guess condominiums like for-sale or rental, anything that prohibits, uh, multifamily, if they were approved as condominiums, to, uh, to be, uh, for-sale only and not rental? Or any transition from fee simple to rental over time, or?
The only thing the city could do is, uh, condition, put a condition that requires the condominium declaration to prohibit rental.
Okay.
The issue then becomes 20 years from now, who enforces that?
Right.
Once they're occupied, and if the hu- if the owners don't care, is the city really going to be able to enforce that? But that's the best we can do.
Right. And if a condominium project development was approved, if that project wanted to evolve to rental apartments versus condominiums, would that require a, a rezoning, or how does that work?
No, once they're built, they're there, um, that would be, you could make that a condition of the zoning as well, that they can't, uh, stop being a condominium, which they can't convert to something else.
Okay. Again, it was mentioned, we, we don't have a lot of condominiums in the city, so it's just, as we start to consider these, it's, I think, good questions to ask, but... Other questions, comments? Mr. Tolan?
Uh, Mr. Green, four quick questions, if you could find out, uh, the number of units is proposed to be 198. If, uh, there's a price point, a, an average price point that they're shooting for, that would be good. Also, the square footage, um, Mr. Huff mentioned one and two bedrooms, so I'd also be curious what the mix is proposed to be, number of ones versus one, number of twos. I did note that he made the comment that, uh, that it would, it'd be appropriate for , uh, smaller families or maybe single people, but, but, uh, folks that are more senior. Um, certainly, I'm guessing the price point would, would afford the opportunity for people that are maybe a little bit more affluent, so, uh, if, uh, if that's the case, that might be a, a, a good thing, um, especially if the, the weight is more on the one-bedroom than, than the two-bedroom. And then, uh, would just ask if you could check with the applicant and see if they would be doing, be willing to do a set aside, either a number of units or, uh, donation to the hous- housing fund, uh, the kind of the typical fare that we ask, uh, developers as we go through this process, and that's, that's all I had. Thank you.
Ms. McGrew?
Thank you. Mr. Green, um, I believe Mr. Tolan asked to check about the price point. I'm interested in that as well. Also, I'd like to know if the ingress-egress on State Route 140 could be a right-in, right-out I'd like to see a crime report for the last two years for the area. Since these are fee simple, for-sale, owner-occupied, the city wouldn't have any, um, restrictions exactly for what the facade should look like in commercial buildings, apartments, they have to be, what, 50% brick or stone?
Uh, that is our, uh, recommended exterior finish, is a majority of either brick or stone, and these being a, a multifamily development, they would have to go before our Oversight Committee for Review and Approval of the style and the materials.
Since these will be initially sold as owner-occupied, will there be elevators anywhere? Will they be ADA compliant, and how would that be addressed?
Anything else, Ms. McGrew?
No, wait. He's writing, but I'm not done.
Okay, okay.
And of course, you, you're, you're expecting this one, but I would like to know if the area has to be clear-cut, and if the applicant intends to use native material, plant material, and adhere to our plant palette.
That is a requirement. Yes, ma'am.
Great. Um, Mr. Huff stated that the construction would be built possibly over a five-year period. One, um, building would be completed and, and occupied, and then they would start another one. We're also having, um, work on SR 140 in, what, five, seven, eight years? And we are going to have a roundabout construction right at that intersection, Reinhardt College Parkway. I'm very concerned about all of this construction traffic in the area and the dangers that that might, um, cause. I am wondering if the applicant could build everything all at once and not phase it through five years and continue to clog up SR 140 over a longer period of time. Also, uh, as was addressed, um, I would be very happy that these were not rental, that, um, they were not sold to corporate investors who are gobbling up property and then renting it out. That's all.
Okay.
Please continue.
Okay. Mr. Waterman?
Well, I don't know what else there is to ask, but, uh, just, uh, some clarification on a, on a term, it's just terminology, but, uh, the report here, it says, uh, the units will be in a stacked, flat configuration. Could you just help me understand what that term means?
Uh, just a single building each for, each unit will only be one floor. It won't be, uh, like a two-story condominium unit, is my understanding.
Okay, so one livable unit is just one floor, there's not... So the building itself is one floor, but there's multiple, multiple units?
There'll be multiple floors, but each unit will only be, um, a one-story.
But more than one unit per floor?
Yes.
That's what, I think that's what you were really getting at.
Yeah, yeah.
There's more, multiple units per floor.
Right, stack, yeah, so stacked, flat means multiple units per floor.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
But no unit is two-story?
But no, no units two-stores, yes. Underst- I understand now, thank you.
Mr. Johnson?
So if I read this right, uh, it looks like the square footage, uh, 891 square feet approximately for a one-bedroom, all the way up to 1609 square feet. Uh, I know the question's been raised about the price point, uh, and the only reason why I bring that up, uh, Mr. Huff did mention the hospitals. Uh, and professionally, I'm a director of a pharmaceutical company and have a whole lot of insight on the hospital and the people that work at those hospitals and the staff. And I'm really, really concerned about the price point because not everybody in those hospitals are C-suite folks. Uh, so my question is going to be, uh, again, about the price point. Uh, who is this for? Who, who, who was the target? Uh, and residents want to know, when something's being constructed in their community, is this something that we can afford, something that the residents can afford? Uh, and my second question was, uh, association fees, are there going to be any association fees, considering this is, uh, a condominium development? Uh, and then the last question I had was, uh, if there're going to be any lenders in play, I know right now some lenders are helping to buy down rates for the potential homeowners, is that something that's in play or consideration? And that might be a, might be a better question. I don't know. I have just a question.
Give him a rush.
Comment. Um, so in the future land-use plan for Cherokee County, it shows the traditional neighborhood redevelopment area, which six, four to six units an acre, correct?
Correct.
So if, if we don't annex the property, and it's in the land-use plan to be developed as such in the, in the county, they could come in and build, you know, single-family homes, you know, multiple levels and, and, you know, three or four bedrooms, you know, several people in each home, drivers, you know, and, and I think that would probably impact the traffic as well. So my question, I guess, is, would the applicant look at, at maybe reducing some of the density, um, to get closer to what the future land-use plan says, you know, for Cherokee County? So this, you know, it's in our growth boundary, it makes sense for us to, to take it in. Um, I think a condominium development is, is something that we don't really have a lot of, if any, um, you know, and, and, you know, I think obviously the price point is the question for anything that we're going to be, you know, not for rent but to own, but, you know, I, I don't, my, I guess my concern or, or my comment is, if, if we don't annex it, and it's in the growth boundary, I mean, it's in the land use, you know, for, for this traditional neighborhood, we're still going to have, you know, a density, a pretty high-density development one way or the other. So, you know, that's, that's just kind of my comment a- about it, is, is, you know, is something that the city needs to take in because we can benefit from it, um, but maybe with a little bit less density. So that's, that's my little comment.
Anything else?
And I, I just was going to add, with, uh, Ms. McGrew's stated about the, the five-year build-out, uh, that just seems like an awful long time, uh, and residents, just doesn't seem like something they would be happy about, uh, with ongoing construction. So, uh, just like Councilwoman McGrew, I would make a recommendation or ask the applicant if there would be, you know, if annexed and approved, if, if they'd be willing to construct this all at one time.
Thank you, Mr. Green. We'll move on to our second public hearing, and it's a public hearing for cases ANNX 2407-001, RZON 2407-004, MP 2407-003, and CUP 2407-002. Request to annex, rezone, gain a conditional use permit and master plan approval along Prominence Point Parkway for residential development. Mr. Green?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Good to see you again. Uh, as you stated, this is for an annexation, rezoning, conditional use permit, and associated variance. Uh, the applicant is looking to build, um, a mixture of townhomes and single-family detached residence on the property off of Prominence Point Parkway. Uh, this property came before, uh, the city about, about two years ago, and they were looking to construct, um, things like a little over 200 apartment units. At that time, the annexation was denied, and the applicant is back again with this, uh, a newer-type development. They are asking for, uh, private streets, and the variance that they are requesting is that those streets not have to be gated. Uh, I know Mr. Parks is here tonight, he's also representing this application.
Thank you, Mr. Green. At this point, we will open up the public hearing for cases ANNX 2407-001, RZON 2407-004, MP 2407-003, and CUP 2407-002. Again, with the applicant, uh, the 10-minute, uh, hearing for the applicant and any support.
Mr. Mayor, just one comment. The case that was denied a couple of years ago was for townhomes, not apartments.
Okay, thank you. And if I can, someone signed up in support, so cut me off with a minute, minute and a half left. You'll be glad to do that, I know.
Yes, sir.
For the record, my name is Parks Hough of the Law Firm, Sam Zalkin Huff, and I represent Traeton Homes in regards to this application. Before you be real clear, Traeton was not involved in the prior application. They called me after maybe six, eight months ago and said they were interested in this property. And because I had handled the previous application, I knew some of the residents in the area, and I told them what I thought was a way to successful case. And so they listened to the, my input, and that's what we're bringing for you today. We have a neighbor standing up in support of this. This is a piece of property on Prominence Point Parkway. It's in your growth boundary agreement. The other side of Prominence is in the city. It makes sense to be in the city. It's in your growth boundary for that reason. The Gray families who seeded here has owned this and been on this property for multiple generations, and they would like to sell. And they look across the street at Prominence Point Parkway, which is developed at five units per acre. And that's what we're asking for, is at five units per acre. I will note there's, since the mayor talked about land use plan, your existing land use map designate this, it has this area appropriately, so is medium-density residential. So I think the staff talks about up to three units per acre, but your existing land use is medium-density residential, which is four to six, and we're right in the middle of that. So this is consistent with the existing development in the area. The... What I'd like to point you to is this site plan here, which I handed out to you, and it shows what we're doing on the property. So, single entrance off Prominence Point Parkway. When you enter the development, on either side, there is a cluster of townhomes that are, is facing that entranceway. So they're rear-entry garages, and the fronts of those townhomes will frame the entrance as you come in to the community. And so there are just 16 townhomes, they're denoted as the reddish color on it at the entranceway. And then, when you get back, those are all single-family detached, which is, we had the community meetings before, that was one of the requests. We really want detached product. I will bring out a couple of things about, I really like it when clients mix product types within one community. So having 16 townhomes in this community, I think, is a positive, because it's not an all-townhome community. It's largely a de-single-family detached community, but you know you have buyers that want or need the townhome-type living, non-custodial parent, things like that. But this is a great opportunity for them to be able to have, live in the area. And so it's not a dominant product, but it is a needed product, and it balances out the community as a whole. My client is Traeton Homes, I forgot to mention this. Traeton Homes has been in business since 1971. They're a local privately-owned company based in Marietta. Worked with them for many years. They've got a great reputation on how to execute a good product in a good neighborhood. And that's the other thing we brought to the neighbors, is Traeton as the builder is a known entity. I have included in the handout that I provided you one of the other communities in Winsome Park, which is currently under development. It's on 92, right at Niche Road, directly across Niche Road from the Baptist Church. So you can go and look and see what product they're building right there. This is the same type of product that they would be building here. I thought you would like to see the details of the quality of their construction and how they execute on these developments. So this is an opportunity to develop on 14 and a half acres on Prominence Point, put good housing with access to the jobs, access to the interstates. Your, you know, 59 homes, 16 townhomes, that is a density of 5.17 units per acre. Again, when you look across the street, and the aerial here shows it very clearly, what the Gray family is only asking for is, we've been here, we've watched all this good development happen, we want to sell, we want to be treated similarly to what we've been looking at for 20-plus years. So we're not asking for more, we're asking for a very consistent type of development to what we've had across the street. It makes sense to be in the city. We will, of course, comply with all your requirements on native plants, and the access would be done pursuant to y'all's input from DOT. So we have, I do want to mention real quick, we had a couple of public input meetings. We actually had one, reached out to the neighbors and had them, a pre-meeting, to share with them the directly adjoining neighbors. They would like to ensure that they've got the 50-foot buffer. They've asked where we're going to build the fence, and my answer is, we'll build it where you want us to build it. If you want it on the line, it's on the line. If you want it at recess, then our property will do that. If you want the buffer to be amended with evergreens, we'll do that. So we are glad to work with them on however they want to do the buffer. Also, just one quick shout-out to the History Museum. That's where I do my public input meetings now. When I was here, when they first opened, I had a community room, I walked up, I said, "Can I do my community meetings there?" They said, "Yes." I said, "I want to do it so that people go there and see it. It's a great opportunity to introduce community to it." So we do them there, and they're a great location for those meetings. I'll reserve some time, and I think someone signed up.
Thanks, sir. Get a time check, Mr. Peppers, just...
Three minutes and 49 seconds.
Okay. We do have three citizens signed up to speak. Again, when you come to speak, clearly state your name and address into the microphone. Is there anyone here, any of the three here to speak in favor? Okay? Please come forward. You did sign up, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
So you knocked one off your list.
Yes, yes.
Actually, I'm kind of...
If you'll give your name.
I need to preface this with, I'm sort of in between.
If you'll give your...
My name is Linda Stettin. I live in Mills Ridge subdivision, and I am one of the immediately affected property owners. Mr. Huff very graciously met with our neighbors, and obviously, we'd all like smaller density. The way this property is designed, if they, if the density is lowered, it only results in wider lots, not a further distance from our property lines, if that makes sense. The product's narrow and deep. So even if, you know, obviously, we'd really rather have something closer to what we are, but I understand the challenge that they face insofar as the development. And I think this is an infinitely better product than what appeared before the council almost two years ago. Having said that, in speaking with Traeton, the things that we have requested is that they do the fencing, keep their pets and children on their side and ours on ours, because we do have some juvenile delinquents in the neighborhood, they'll be operating loaders and stuff. We have also asked, because of the buffer area being largely deciduous trees, that they put some evergreen into the buffer area. I don't have any issue with these being conditions with us to have the flexibility to continue negotiations if they run into trouble. We have requested that they limit sales to investors upfront and to include in their bylaws and covenants a restriction of percentage of ownership being rented out. We don't want absentee renters, investors controlling their HOA. We have likewise requested that they, during the land development phase, that they limit their work on Saturdays from 9:00 to 6:00 p.m., 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., and none on Sunday. But we're willing to work with them if they get behind schedule and need to get out there on that, you know, during those times. I would prefer that this not become a precedent for the city to start putting more townhomes in South Canton. I recognize the need for them in this neighborhood, because otherwise, between the cost of the land and all the development they have to do, including that big buffer below our dam, it's, they have to have the numbers to make it work. And one final, this is just a personal request. Our neighborhood used to be a great area to view stars in the sky, and still is for the most part. Even with all the development at Prominence Point, if you look at the satellite pictures in their package, we still look like a forest. So anything the applicant could do to minimize the light pollution to us would be greatly appreciated. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Stettin. So we have two additional residents signed up to speak in opposition, correct? Judith Bond? Good evening. Again, if you could state your name and address.
Judith Bond? I live at 135 Village Drive, Canton, 30114.
You can go ahead.
Okay, thank you. I'm a member of the station at Prominence, which is off of Kita, Prominence, Kita. And we are all against this construction. It's not a MMB issue, it's a safety issue, it's an environmental issue, and it's a health issue. More subdivisions means more vehicles. Prominence Point, Kita Road is a 30 mile an hour zone. Nobody drives 30 miles an hour, it's more like 50 or more. And it's just a danger. There have been accidents, if you wanted to cross, you could not. Removing more trees and replacing them with concrete, buildings, roofs, driveways, et cetera, will only have more cars, which will add to more CO2 in the atmosphere. And that area is the last vestige of green space and forest remaining in that area. It's the last refuge for our wildlife. More impervious surfaces are going to mean more stormwater runoff, depleting the soil and contaminating the water supply. One mature tree can absorb 48 pounds of carbon dioxide in a year and release its oxygen back in exchange, trees of the very air we breathe. Additional traffic on Prominence Point, Kita Road will affect the air that we breathe. And also, if I can find my piece of paper. There was a report in 2022, and there were 74 crashes. We don't need more accidents, more people getting injured or killed, which could possibly happen. Also, with the amount of residences, that would be more than double the square mile needed to qualify as rural status for the development. A small patch of wood with its trees and forest floor are the only green space along Prominence Point, Kita Road. Therefore, the only natural filter system against all that exhaust emissions, pollution, makes poor air quality, and it's dangerous. In conclusion, the homeowners along Kita ask, and members of the task force remind you of your own studies and reports, along with our personal stories of vehicle and pedestrian issues we see firsthand, so that you do hopefully think about the welfare of hundreds of homeowners, which is more important than the desire of a single developer who will destroy the ecosystem and inflict further congestion and danger, and then walk away.
Thank you, Ms. Bond.
Thank you.
Do you have one other speaker? Could I just get a time check? Mr. Peppers?
We have 32 seconds left for the applicant and 6 minutes and 3 seconds left for the opposition.
Okay. Mr. Thomas Weaver?
I'm not sure, Mr. Weaver looked like he was trying to note that he was in favor...
In respectful opposition.
In opposition, okay, all right. Just want to make sure I get you on the right side.
Thank you, Mr. Peppers. Members of council, and to the benefit of the audience, my name is Thomas Weaver. I reside at 131 Old Marietta Road here in Canton, Georgia. The comments I want to place this evening in respect to this project application that's been presented to you by Mr. Parks Huff and approbation of the Traeton Homes is strictly in regards to traffic concerns. I'm not going to argue as to whether or not it's an incorporated or unincorporated pocket, because it is within the growth boundary, and it is immediately adjacent to current city-controlled spaces as part of our city limit. Also, I'm not going to argue for one of density, because the character of that neighborhood, as anyone can clearly see, on the other side of the road and going along into Kita Road, has a higher density, so I'm not going to argue that either. Strictly traffic. I was very careful to review the appended agenda packet materials that each of you have been presenting, and I very carefully read over the engineering study that was prepared by A and R Engineering Group on behalf of Traeton Homes in respect of Mr. Parks Huff's client in regards to the traffic analysis of the area along the Prominence Point Parkway. Parkway is a designation that's given by the United States Federal Post Office to designate an area of road that has certain types of green space alongside of it, and also is commiserate with Promenade, because those are areas of roadways that are usually tree-lined. When you look at Prominence Point Parkway, as you come off of Highway 5 and you meander around the public shopping center at the Paradise Points at Prominence, where Publix is, and where the Wendy's is, and across the street where the new gas station and the Dollar Tree presently is, you'll notice that it's a four-lane, two-lane on each side divided highway with a median grassy, excuse me, I misspoke, a grassy median. As you continue along Prominence Point Parkway, as the previous speaker said, the roadway, still at 30 miles an hour, suddenly bottlenecks to a single lane on both sides of the road, divided by a very well-lit median grass area. My concern for one of traffic is, to the extent that the developer seeks to receive council assent to build out 75 new tracks within the property, given that analysis that I had used in the previous public hearing about the averages of how many cars per household, my concern is strictly, how is that going to work on a one-way out? Because these are one-way, these are one-way streets, there's no way to make a left because of the grassy median. How is that going to work in that corridor when everyone's going to have to make either a U-turn or a right to exit out? There's no way to make a left. Those motorists whom are desirous to make a left to go back to Publix, for example, to receive food or fuel or other commodities, or maybe to Kroger or a different competitor in that market space, they're either going to have to make a U-turn, or they're going to have to go, continue along Prominence Point Parkway and either take Kita Road or some other alternative avenue in order to exit that area on the far side of the city limits. Council does have a legitimate vested interest to create great neighborhoods. Again, I won't argue for one of density, and I won't argue for one of the character of the community. However, that has to be balanced against council's roadmap for success and having that infrastructure in place. I've said before, and I'll say again, infrastructure first, then development. The road, my fear, to be succinct, is that Prominence Point Parkway, where it becomes a one-lane divided road without adequate lighting or other infrastructure to accommodate the added traffic volume, may frustrate council's intent and its continued desire to make Canton one of the best and coolest small cities in America. For this reason, and for this reason only, I would respectfully ask that council pump the brakes on this, but not to disparage Mr. Huff's applicant or client's interest in regards to any of the other concerns. regards to any of the other concerns that I had mentioned that I'm not going to challenge.
Thank you, Ms. Weaver. Applicant, I think, 32 seconds to rebut?
Hold on a second. I gotta get my clock here. Go.
Okay. Real quickly, there is actually a median break in front of the property, I think in anticipation that this property would probably get developed because they clearly didn't do a median break for the single-family homes that are on the property now. So, it was actually a median break that's in place that we're lining up to on prominence point Parkway. I do want to also mention, I asked my client, would they agree to dark-skY compliant lighting? With LED lighting, it's a lot better to do and easier to do.
That is your time.
We would agree to dark-sky compliant lighting, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Huff. At this point, we will close the public hearing and open up to council discussion and questions for staff. Mr. Green, again, I just wanted to, I know Mr. Huff mentioned the land use plan, but in the staff report, just if you could confirm, the requested density is not consistent with the recommendation of the comprehensive plan and that the current density is, in that, in the plan is 1 to 3 houses per acre and this development is proposing 5.18, is that correct?
Yes, sir, I've already made the note to go back and check the staff report to confirm or correct on the proposed density.
Okay.
Mr. Turner says that the staff report is correct.
Okay. I had a question, I think for, maybe for Mr. Dyer. Notice in the proposed, again, this is an annexation request and it's, we're not dealing with an island here, but if this annexation were to be approved, notice that the triangle that would be left there, would that be considered an unincorporated island or?
It already is, I mean, this property is already, well, it touches the county, never mind. It would, but the county didn't raise it in its response.
Okay, but are we?
County is not objected to that.
Okay, are we allowed though to create an unincorporated island?
The statute, you're not allowed to create one, but it's only an issue if you went to try to annex it against their will. That's the only time it would be an issue.
Okay, thank you.
Well, to further add to that, in the previous application, the county did note that that would create an island and the applicant at that time carved out a 50 by 50 section.
Right.
And they've done that as well on the survey submitted for this. So, no, it will not create an island.
Okay.
They're doing the strip, the 50-foot strip as well?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay. Other questions, comments?
Mr. Mayor, I do have one comment as it relates to Ms. Linda's comments. I know the last time we went through this process a couple of years ago, she was spokesperson for the Mill Ridge neighborhood at that time. It sounds like that is the case. Again, Mr. Green, if you could confirm that at least the majority of the residents that have vocalized an opinion in that neighborhood are in agreement with her comments, that would be, that'd be useful information.
Anyone else? Mr. Johnson?
I don't know what page this is on here, I was just glancing through some of the features and this was pitched as a high-quality project, but when I look at some of this stuff, this page here, the one that's marked under other, the first thing that stood out to me, only because I haven't just replaced one recently, and again, I know this is probably a little early, but 14 CR AC. And I guess my question is, why on earth would a builder building new construction use a, that's just very, that's very low quality in terms of CR rating, but 14 CR is just pretty, pretty low. Not to mention, there is a confirmed, I did double-check and look just now, there is a confirmed class action suit against Linux for the poor quality of those systems. So, I just wanted to state that for the record so that you guys could look into that, but there is a confirmed class action suit against Linux.
Anyone else? Thank you, Mr. Green.
And I would like to make one more further clarification, what Mr. Pepper said, that the applicant in 2022 was for townhomes and it was 114 townhomes.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Green. As council voted earlier, the third public hearing is, has been postponed until our February 6 meeting, so we will now move into our business meeting. If anyone would like to exit now quietly, you're welcome to do so. You're certainly welcome to stay for the entire meeting. You have in your packet the draft minutes from our council meeting on November 21st? Any changes, revisions, or motions for those minutes?
Mr. Mayor, if there are no changes or questions, I would move to approve the draft minutes as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. All members voted for the motion. We have two informational items this evening, these are staff updates, this is for your information only, no discussion. We'll be getting technical reports on two upcoming cases in our next meeting or in our January meeting, but item A, again, information only, case CUP 2410-005, request to construct 208 townhome units along Misty Way and Misty Court. Mr. Green?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, as the mayor stated, this is a conditional use permit application to construct 208 townhome units along Misty Way and Misty Court. As you may recall, this property come before this body a couple of years ago and they were asking for 286 apartments. That conditional use permit was denied, the applicant filed suit, the judge sided with the city, as was shown in an email that Mr. Pepper sent you folks earlier today. So, they are coming back with another plan. I know that our fire marshal or our safety coordinator, Jay Kula, will probably have an issue with the second entrance, as it's shown coming off of Teasley, he is looking further into that.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Green. And then item B, again, for your information only, cases CUP 2411-001 and MPA 2410-003, request to amend previously approved conditional use permit and master plan amendment to allow for fee simple ownership. Mr. Green?
Again, this is a request for conditional use permit and a master plan amendment. In a previous application, the applicant had requested in his letter of intent that this be a for-rent community. They are now seeking the ability to have for-rent and fee simple ownership units out there.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Green. Do we have any announcements? Now, we'll move on to our 10-minute public input. We have one resident signed up to speak, Mr. Thomas Weaver. You're three for three tonight, congratulations.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, my name is Thomas Weaver and I reside at 131 Old Marietta Road here in Canton, Georgia. Now, who says lightning doesn't strike thrice, members of council? I want to do something very highly unusual, for those who've known me for just a little longer, when council was next door in the chamber and even before then, when it was on the third floor upstairs, under even the former administration prior to that, I've always presented comments without any benefit of any kind of aid or materials, but tonight, I would like to read you a letter that I had wrote for Santa. Absolutely, and I was actually tempted, based on the inspiration of the drummer boys, to deliver it to them so they could put it in the mailbox there over by the gazebo, but perhaps the city clerk can help me to deliver it to the North Pole instead.
We'll do our best.
I'm sure that she will do just fine. With your permission, Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'd like to read this letter to you, to all whom are in attendance, is that okay?
Yes, please proceed.
Honorable and respectable Mayor Grant and council members, it is with humility that I again beg leave and implore each of you to strongly consider the prospect of working with the Cherokee County government alongside neighboring municipalities within our county to effectuate a potential floating local option sales tax Floss proposal to be placed on an upcoming ballot. I have it on good authority that Cherokee County Board of Commissioners will be meeting with our Cherokee Legislative Delegation next week. I have many, I have for many years supported the notion of a homestead option sales tax as those funds could be shared with cities and could be used for more than just property and village tax abatement, transportation initiatives, for example, but our legislative delegation declined to vote to create the necessary local bill resolution required to direct our election superintendent to place the matter on the previous general presidential ballot. To be honest, I thought all hope was gone. Alas, the magic of Christmas is in the air and where there is a will, there surely must be a way. The legislature and the state electorate gave us Floss, and while it's not everything that it could be or should be, it is at least something to consider. The biggest gripe of the year, the Ebenezer Scrooge and the Grinch in the room, is that dreaded annual property tax bill, right, that everybody gets from our Cherokee County Tax Commissioner. It's the worst kind of gift that just keeps giving. As appraisal rates climb and miller rate pressures that cities and counties have to weather to continue to provide even the most basic services continue to create friction against competing political promises, that property tax bill just always seems to be slightly more than its previous annual rendition. Floss in and of itself may not be the premier answer, but it is an answer. It even speaks for itself against the great "what about me?" question, right? That "what about me?" interrogatory, that all of you must answer when confronted by a constituent who, for various reasons, may be on a fixed or limited income but is not quite of age to participate in the generous senior exemption that we have under our city charter. In the spirit of Christmas, I challenge each of you to cobble together the political fortitude to find a way to cooperate with neighboring governments, to forge an intergovernmental agreement to resolve placing Floss proposal or a Floss proposal on the 2025 ballot. Listen, unless, of course, the ghost of Christmas passed, all right? Should have to stand here, that knocking, remember the movie, Christmas Carol? Have to stand here to remind you that the ghost of Christmas future will be none too pleased if yet another opportunity to sequester rampant taxation, literally pricing people out of their homes was lost to the perils of political inconvenience. So, my salutation is, it is the best Christmas present that you could ever hope to give, so please, in the spirit of Christmas, Floss, big red bow under the tree for all. It's the best that I could do, trying to be creative here, but like the drummer boy, I'm going to keep beating that drum until I have no other. Please, and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver. It's a wonderful life in the city of Canton and we appreciate your input. We have several items on the consent agenda this evening that we appear to have consensus for. As per usual protocol, I will read these items individually, if anyone would like any of these removed for further discussion, please let me know. Item A, approval of local administered project LAP recertification application and request for mayor to sign application. Item B, approval of traffic signal proposal from North Cherokee Electrical, Inc. in the amount of $59,375. Item C, approval of amendment five of the Professional Engineering Services Agreement to H2O Innovation Operations and Maintenance. Item D, approval of updated municipal services agreement with Cherokee County for the administration of animal control services. And item E, approval of updated municipal services agreement with Cherokee County for first appearance hearings. Would anyone like any of those items removed for further discussion? If not, I will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve this consent agenda as read.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. All members voted for the motion. We have one item of old business tonight, that's item A, discussion and possible action to approve a resolution for participation in amicus brief in the Chang versus City of Milton appeal. Mr. Peppers?
It's okay, I'll just do it from up here.
Please do.
We mentioned this at the last meeting, we've been suggested by our legal counsel and the Georgia Municipal Association to consider a resolution to participate in the amicus brief as it relates to an appeal before the state superior, State Supreme Court on the case of Chang versus the City of Milton as it relates to objects within the right-of-way. And so, what you have before you is a resolution for the city council to consider approving and authorizing the mayor to sign so that we can become a party to that amicus brief.
Thank you, Mr. Peppers. We have discussed this, starting to believe it's a responsible action to take. Any questions, comments? Ms. McGrew?
If there's no discussion, I would like to make a motion to approve a resolution for participation in the amicus brief in the Chang versus City of Milton appeal.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. All members present voted for the motion. And several items and new businesses to attend to tonight, these are all for discussion, no action is suggested or recommended. Item A, discussion of proposals for professional services to prepare two concept plans for the North Canton School Site. Mr. Patton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. If city council recall, there was a discussion at the city council retreat in regards to the North Canton School Site, coming out of that, city manager asked Kevin Turner and I to enter into discussions with consulting firms and request proposals from consulting firms for the preparation of two concept plans. One of the concept plans would be keeping the gymnasium, if you will, renovating the gymnasium and the rain and acreage be dedicated for parks recreation uses. The second concept plan was keeping and renovating a gymnasium parks recreation purposes plus adding a housing component to the concept plan. Kevin and I reached out to TSW, Keck and Wood, and Pond and Company. The staff does recommend that city council consider approving the contract with Keck and Wood, that is not the low amount proposal. The low amount proposal did not include any preliminary site analysis work, nor did it include any discussion with staff relative to amendments to the concept plan as a part of their proposal. It was just prepare that, the two concept plans and there was no language relative to reaching out to staff for amendments or comments, that sort of thing. The other two proposals did address preliminary site analysis as well as meetings with staff to address comments, concerns, prior to finalizing the two concept plans. The firm that the staff would recommend is Keck and Wood, they're the firm that's working on the North Canton Cottage Village site plan, they're also doing some engineering roadwork, the dollar amount of the Keck and Wood proposal. Wood proposal, $18,850. I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Patton. This is certainly exciting. It's gonna be good to get this in process, and any questions from Mr. Patton this evening?
I, I guess one question, Mr. Patton. Do you, do you have a, an initial kind of reaction, uh, relative to the design plans one versus two, to include or not include housing?
Uh, gonna wait, uh, until we get into it a little bit. I know personally, with me being Housing Initiatives Director, I would like to see a, uh, uh, city council move forward, uh, with, uh, the possibility of, uh, uh, choosing a concept plan that does include housing. Kevin and I did meet on site with all three of these firms. We discussed at length both concepts while we were on the site. We did, uh, talk with them in, uh, regards to, uh, the housing component, uh, uh, should mirror and match the Mill Village housing that's in the neighborhood, so it is compatible with the neighborhood.
And is that housing component, would that be located north of that chain link fence on the north side of the property?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Patton. I, I just wanna state my support for your comments of including the housing. I, I know the North Canton Village concept plan, one of the original motivations, uh, was to create a plan that could be replicated throughout the city, so we are addressing, we do have housing needs and on property that we own and control that is already in the city limits. Um, I think it's a win-win for us, and, uh, I'd like to see us, uh, control our own destiny when that comes to that versus, uh, developers coming in and, and, and wanting to, to, to try to, of course, they're always welcome to assist us, but, uh, again, where we have the opportunity, I think we have the responsibility to, to adhere to our roadmap, and, uh, so it's exciting to see, uh, the possibility of, of both plans, but if there is, uh, housing and attainable housing options that, uh, comply with the neighborhood and, and, uh, our roadmap, then I think it's always, uh, a good opportunity to, and to be a good opportunity to, to replicate some of the plans we've invested in already for North Canton Village, and, uh, I think it, that meets a lot of our original goals there, so. Any other comments, questions? Okay, we'll move on. Item B, discussion of the Georgia Initiative for Community Housing, GIC Canton Housing Team Proposal to Conduct Minor Housing Rehabilitation Projects. Mr. Patton?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, council members. As, uh, you all are aware, the city of Canton, uh, is, uh, ending its second year in the Georgia Initiative for Community, uh, Housing Program. Will move into the third and final year next year. One of the projects that the housing team has talked about and discussed was, uh, some, uh, housing rehabilitation work. During the summer of this year, uh, we conducted a housing, uh, survey, street level housing survey of 1,950 parcels, uh, scattered, uh, throughout the city, if you will. That housing survey, uh, did include some commercial properties, uh, we felt, uh, we should look at those, so if there are some issues that code enforcement might, uh, need to address, we would have, uh, the record for them to use for that. Our target area one, uh, which is where we propose to conduct these, uh, minor housing rehabilitation projects, basically is, uh, the west side of Waleska Road, south and west of Rhinehart College Parkway, and north of Riverstone Parkway. Within that target area, there's a total of 698 parcels. That does include unincorporated Cherokee County properties. It includes, uh, commercial properties. It includes office properties, and it includes, uh, numerous, uh, multifamily, uh, apartment projects as well. There are approximately, and I can't remember the exact number, uh, but there's about 280 odd single-family detached homes within, uh, this target area. Out of that number of single-family detached homes, there are 45 owner-occupied homes. We have reached out, uh, via letter to those, uh, homeowners to gauge any interest in minor re, rehabilitation work, and what we mean by minor rehabilitation work would be painting exteriors or fixing screens or, uh, repainting stairs, steps, uh, handrails, that sort of thing. Anything that, uh, would be major renovation, we would, uh, uh, request that that work, uh, go to Habitat for Humanity utilizing, uh, Cherokee County Community Development Block Grant. With, uh, this program that the housing team is proposing to undertake, uh, we, uh, do not expect to, uh, ask city for any, uh, revenue. We have had preliminary discussions with some contractors and all. Everything, uh, material-wise, uh, would, uh, be through donations. We've reached out to other organizations, uh, to partner with the housing team for these minor rehabilitation projects. I'm here to answer any questions. We want to get, uh, hopefully, city council approval before moving forward with some of these projects.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Patton. Um, yes, first of all, I want to applaud the GIC committee for their great work on, on this effort and certainly interest in, in these, uh, minor rehabilitation projects. One of my questions was, like, minor, what does that encompass? How do we define that? So I think, uh, number one, to be very, to be very clear about that, would, would be helpful. Um, I think there may be some other questions, and I can ask council as, as we look at this further to, to afford any of those to the city manager that, that you may have kind of going forward here. Um, I know we've discussed that area before, and it's certainly a great area to start with. Um, and we discussed at one point, I think, of, of having the committee look at, at sort of nonprofit, you mentioned Habitat for Humanity, and, and be a kind of a coordinating, I guess, effort for this and nonprofits. Um, I, and I may be misunderstanding this wrong, some concerns I have is, is actually having the committee members themselves do some of the work there. Um, and it's not that they're not competent or, or highly skilled, uh, uh, I know some of them personally, and I know how they are, but I just, um, I guess that concerns me from liability. I know that, that, that we have, uh, the sort of, uh, release form that release, the homeowner asking for the help would, you know, would, would grant, uh, uh, kind of no liability or whole harmful clause to the city. But I guess in that case, this may be a question for Mr. Dyer, like, if one of our committee members were actually doing the work and they got injured or, or something, would the city be liable for that? I may be misunderstanding that wrong, um, that the committee members would be doing some of this work, possibly. Uh, if I am, please correct me, but, uh, again, I, I applaud the effort of identifying the issues, getting it done. I guess the other question I would have, if it's done through the city and the city committee, is that how are we qualifying, uh, the homeowners that do need help? And, uh, are we taking applications, you know, or offering to some but not others? And some people can get donations for, but then the neighbor wants something done and we can't get donations for that? I, I'm getting into the details here, but I, I think, you know, some, just looking forward, those are just kind of some of the logistics I have concerns about, and again, we can group all those and look at how to, how to best approach them, but I just wanted...
Well, some of the housing team members would be volunteering, uh, their time, and Mr. Dyer could address as to whether we need, uh, some type of a, uh, whole harmless, uh, uh, release letter from the housing team members that, uh, are gonna volunteer, uh, their time. There is a homeowner agreement letter that Mr. Dyer, uh, has, uh, reviewed. He, uh, suggested, uh, some additional language, which, uh, we did amend and add into, uh, the homeowner agreement letter, but, uh, owner-occupied, uh, units was the number one priority that, uh, the housing team, uh, specified that they wanted to concentrate on. And that, that's the reason for the, uh, 45, uh, owner-occupied. I went through, uh, all of our tax records, tax bills versus, uh, what we had in our housing survey information, our GIS information, uh, to determine that, uh, tax bills and property addresses and mailing addresses all were the same in the same name. That's how we came up with the 45 owner-occupied homes, but there are, uh, some other groups. I know that Councilor Toland's had a discussion with, uh, a contractor that is willing to donate, uh, his company, uh, for painting services, and I believe in Mr. Co, Toland, uh, can, uh, respond, but I think there are some other nonprofits that have expressed interest in joining the housing team, uh, with this. I can tell you that, uh, two of the people that did respond to the letters basically wanted major work. One of them, uh, wanted, uh, the housing team to, uh, make an addition onto their house of two rooms. And we politely let them know that, uh, that is not, uh, the purpose of, uh, what this is. That, uh, is not minor rehabilitation work. It's mainly, uh, repairing some windows or painting windows, fixing some screens, painting exteriors, if our housing survey indicated that that was, uh, a need.
Well, and, and again, I want to, to, uh, clearly state my, my support and, and, uh, the GIC, uh, committee members, I appreciate their willingness to, to, to volunteer, again, do what it takes to, to help with these projects and, you know, an additional tool to fight, blight in the city, and again, I just have some kind of logistical concerns and questions about, you know, how it works long, long term, but again, I'm not being negative at all, but I'm just trying to think through it down the road and...
If I may, Mayor.
Certainly, please.
Just to bring back on, uh, some of Mr. Patton's comments. Uh, first off, Mr. Patton, thank you. He's worked tirelessly over the last two years, um, guiding the GIC housing team, um, through some, um, you know, some folks that didn't work out for whatever professional reasons or whatever reasons that they had, and I think we have 21 members now. They're all engaged. We're all getting, getting the work done. We're kind of building up to this kind of opportunity now that we've been talking about for the last two years, and I think, uh, Mr. Mayor, to your point, the, you know, the Ts have been crossed, the Is have been dotted. What we need to do a better job of is communicating to council exactly what, what the status is. Uh, Mr. D, with Mr. Dyer's help, we've, we've kind of, um, handled some of the legal questions as, as it relates to, uh, release of liability, things like that, and as far as the scope of work, we are talking about essentially, I hate to put it this way, but essentially unskilled labor. I mean, I can paint a house as good as anybody else, and I don't do it for a living, and we've got some other, you know, several things on our list of things that ordinary folks could do, maybe with a little guidance, um, but, uh, we, we've got the, we got the willpower of the folks that are willing to help out, both, both the, uh, GIC team members as well as community members that we've talked to, and everybody's talking it up. Um, one of the, one of the opportunities that we have, and I'll, I'll be brief, I promise, is there's a house that's literally within a stone's throw of Raised Donuts, and it's right there at the entrance to that community. It needs a, a, a full paint job, so that's gonna be a showcase for us. We believe that once word sort of gets out about the work that we're doing as a team that, uh, other folks that might be a little bit more reti, reticent about raising their hand might actually be in need and raise their hand and allow us to come in and do the work. So, a lot of excitement among the team. I think that, uh, the excitement in the city for what we're about to do, hopefully with the blessing of council, uh, will be, um, you know, will be pretty great, and, and I think we got, we're all gonna be able to look back on this, you know, years from now and say we, we did good work and we, we helped the community.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Toland. Any other questions or comment? Again, as, as we think about this, um, again, if we could just kind of, uh, send those questions to Mr. Peppers, uh, and Mr. Patton, then we can just make sure we understand the process and procedures here so that when council does approve, um, the project, we are, we all, uh, again, are very, uh, informed and, and proud of that, uh, work that we're doing, so. But again, thanks, and thank you, Mr. Patton, for your leadership there.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council member.
Item C, discussion of Ridge Pine Elevated Tank and Booster Pump Station Proposal for Addendum Number One to Task Order Number Seven for Black and Beach in the amount of
Thank you.
Ms. Watson?
Um, so as you are aware, we are currently in design at the, um, Ridge Pine Elevated Tank and Booster Pump Station. Um, the original scope was designed in, or was developed in the summer of 2023, and, um, the original scope did not include any of the coordination with TSW on the South Canton Park, and in conjunction has created a lot of changes on what was originally scoped. A couple of, of the major things are, the original scope was planned to be completed in February of 2025. Due to some supplemental work, it's now, um, scheduled for completion in February of 2025. Um, there's, was a four-month delay on the survey due to having to include survey outside of the original scope, which was for the construction of the South Canton Park, so they did additional survey of the area for that, um, for the park project. Um, there was the coordination with TSW for South Canton Park with Black and Beach, which was not included in the original scope. The original design also was for a new, uh, booster pump station, um, housed separately. As they went through design, it was determined that those pumps would be instead installed inside of the tank itself. Um, and also the existing Kmart booster station, uh, can also be decommissioned and demolished. That design and concepts required work outside of the original scope. Um, and then we also added the decorative lighting to the, to the tank, which included some additional electrical work, um, which is the, the lighting outside of the tank where we'll be able to change the color the season or, um, and stuff like that. Um, and then also during design, and we've discussed this previously, Black and Beach sought out additional input from multiple vendors on the, the tanks, and as they were talking to those vendors, they determined that one of the major issues with the tank site was the location of the tanks. We've moved it in 35 feet, which has significantly decreased the cost of construction, but that also, um, adds a little bit of design time where we're having to change the design to fit, um, that change. But again, that will result in a construction cost savings of approximately $500,000. Um, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Any questions for Ms. Watson? That someone will be considering at the next meeting?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Item D, discussion of I-575 Emergency Access Median Opening from Practical Design Partners, LLC in the amount of $21,700. Ms. Watson?
Thank you. Um, about a month and a half ago, I was approached by the Police Department to, um, work to develop a plan for a crossing on the I-575 median somewhere between Exit 14 and Exit 19 because of, um, the significant amount of accidents and issues that we have in that area. Um, if you're traveling north on I-575 and there's an accident on, on I-575 South, there's a cable rail, the police have to go all the way around to get down, um, to the accident site. Um, so I, um, contacted GDOT to find out what we needed to do in order to get that process started. Um, we will need design plans, so I asked PDP to provide a proposal for those plans, um, and they have, um, brought back this proposal, um, to, to complete that project for us. So I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Any questions for Ms. Watson? Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to item D, discussion of update to the city's noise ordinance. And is this considered a first reading, Mr. Dyer?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, first, I'd like to thank, uh, Mr. Toland and Mr. Waterman for being on the committee with me to go through the ordinance and check and, and make these updates, and to Attorney Dyer for being at all the meetings to give us legal guidance. Assistant Manager Ingram and City Manager Peppers, thank you very much for attending. We appreciate all of your input. And Chief Farrell and Deputy Chief Tucker, thank you very much. Um, this definitely impacts you and your staff, so thank you for all of your input. And City Clerk Ms. Fortner, thank you for attending, and Mr. Turner also. I want to thank everybody for all of your input. We would like to turn this over to Mr. Dyer now to explain the, uh, suggested changes to the ordinance. ordinance.
I have to put a cough drop in. I wouldn't make it with the talking.
Okay.
Take your time.
So the ordinance, before we just had, if it was audible, it was a violation. The committee decided to use a decimal level sound meter process, which the Police Department felt would be easier for them to deal with because it's a more objective way of measuring. So the way the ordinance is set up is generally in the city during the daytime hours and the ending varies between weekend and weekday. You cannot have sixty-five decibel sound leave your property. So, and just if you aren't aware of this, sixty-five decibels is talking. So essentially, conversational talking is, is sixty-five decibels. So that is, applies to everybody citywide. There's then a list of particular activities that have different, some different rules, different tweaks. But that's generally the scheme, and, and the committee felt that that was fair and I think provided the Police Department better tools to deal with noise. We don't have a lot of noise complaints, according to the Police Department, but this was just addressing the ordinance in a way we probably needed to a while ago.
Okay. Thank you. And I'd like to echo Ms. McGrew's appreciation to the committee and everyone involved on crafting the revised ordinance. Any questions or comments?
Also to point out that, sorry about that, also to point out that it is a decimal, decibel and time, time limit.
Yeah, if it's impulsive sound, it's a different thing.
Right.
So it's a sustained decibel level.
For talking.
Right.
Not yelling, right?
It is normal conversation. It's, I think Sean and Dwayne actually had an app on their phone, and we sort of played around with it the first meeting, just figuring out what sixty-five decibels was.
Great. Awesome.
Mr. Mayor, if I may add, we, we did try to take a more holistic approach to it, not just for any particular business, but trying to think of the city as a whole. So I think, you know, the time that we invested in the work is, is, is time well spent because I think the product that we came up with, the suggestion that we came up for council to consider, is, is, in our opinion, probably the best that we, we could have, we could have done. And, and thanks again to everybody, and particularly Chief for bringing your expertise from your previous position. That really helped solidify some things in my mind. So thank you, thank you for, and for everybody's input.
Thank you. It'd be great to get this updated. So the second reading at the next meeting, will we look for action after that?
Yes. We will ask for a vote at the next meeting.
Great. Thank you. Item F, discussion of renewal of the city's civility resolution and pledge. Mr. Peppers?
It feels like this book gets heavier every, every meeting. As you know, the city is a recognized city of civility by the Georgia Municipal Association, and it is time for us to renew our civility pledge with them, which comes in the form of a resolution. There's a copy of that within your agenda packet. This was first approved by the council two years ago, so we will have this on the agenda for your next meeting, for you to consider. As such, city staff is informed about what it means to be a city of civility and the way the staff interacts with the public. A city of civility for you is the way you interact with each other and you interact with the public. We can't always control how the public interacts with council or staff, but we basically put forward our best effort to be civil in nature and conducive to a civility within City Hall. Have you any answering questions you might have? All right. I'm going to turn it over in just a minute to Mr. Ingram to give an update on our Schneider projects, but before I do, I did want to cover a couple of items myself. First of all, I did send you an email earlier this week related to House Bill four fifty-one that was approved during the last legislative session and takes place on January first of twenty twenty-five. It's known as the Ashley Wilson Act, and it provides critical illness and long-term disability benefits for first responders that are diagnosed with occupational post-traumatic stress disorder arising from their work within our agency. We're required to participate in some level of coverage for claims that might exist based upon that PTSD process that's been laid out by the state. Amy Thomas and our Human Resources Group did some research and, and tried to get some potential quotes on what that coverage might be. In the end, the recommendation from staff is that we add it to our GERMA, or Georgia Interlocal Risk Management Insurance, through the Georgia Municipal Association. The total cost for us is a little over seventy-six hundred dollars. It's based upon the census of what we have in our law enforcement. The city doesn't have firefighters, so we, we wouldn't pay for those, but we do pay based upon a census of our police officers that are sworn. We will need to approve a resolution to add membership into that fund, and that would be placed on the agenda for the next council meeting. We do have to have this up and running by January one, twenty twenty-five. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have on that item.
Any questions?
Okay. Second item I wanted to bring to your attention, in late November, one of our sewer pumps out at River Green, we have two major pumps in our lift station out there, went down. Those pumps are about twenty-five years old. Staff did go out and seek a repair cost to the pump that's out there. The repair cost was a hundred and thirty thousand. The replacement cost with the new pump was a hundred and forty-seven thousand, but there is some lead time on that. As such, when we got those quotes back, I went ahead and authorized staff to go ahead and order the new pump. Makes more sense to buy the new pump with a longer warranty than to replace the existing pump at, at, at a close cost. I will be adding this to the agenda at the next meeting so that you can vote on it. We're going with the same pump that we have out there because it doesn't make sense to have two different pumps, two different brands of pumps out there. So it's a, it's a sole source with that particular vendor. But based upon the time and the fact that we only have one pump that's currently working, which is not a problem, but we need two pumps for redundancy, we did want to go ahead and move forward with that particular item so that we could get it in and get it installed as soon as possible. But I'll be putting that on the agenda for your formal consideration at the next meeting. But I did want to let you know that for the sake of time, we did go ahead and move forward with sourcing the purchase of a new pump as opposed to a replacement. Last thing I wanted to note is our Team Member of the Month for November was Kaylee Floyd. If you come to City Hall, you'll see her working the front desk and helping out on the administrative side. She's been with our team less than a year, been a very valuable part of that team, getting things together. I don't think there's a single office in the city that doesn't get some assistance from Kaylee on a day-to-day basis, and so she was unanimously nominated and recommended for our Team Member of the Month for November. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Ingram to give an update on our Schneider projects.
Thank you, Mr. Peppers. Mayor and council, good evening. If you recall at the last meeting, Mr. Peppers and I both mentioned that we would get an update on our Schneider projects, the very projects for the city. I reached out to Schneider and along with a few members of Team Canton, we compiled a couple of updates on those projects. Thank you to Ms. Fortner. I think she forwarded the copy of those out to you this afternoon. Please spend some time review those. If you have any questions or you want some further information on any specific project, let me know. But tonight, I'm going to hit on just a few highlights of a few, of some of those topics. And I also wanted to mention to y'all that I reached out to Schneider, Jen Miller. She's the project manager for all the projects, and she has agreed to come in February to do a comprehensive presentation. Hopefully, at that time, I'll be able to share a couple of the photos of some of those projects, provide obviously some more in-depth information, and give you a little bit more accurate timeline as we finish up and approach the end of the projects. But on the City Hall HVAC and roof, the HVAC and roof here are complete. Obviously, this is the first winter season that we've had with the system, so some of my, some of my teammates here in Canton will remind me that we're still adjusting, making some adjustments on those dampeners to try to get that temperature just right, but those are, projects are complete. Our City Hall solar array that's going, going to go on top of City Hall, it is going to be mobilized early twenty twenty-five. They believe it's going to be completed within the first quarter. Once that solar array is on top of the roof, it, along with our solar array at the parking deck, should help offset a vast majority of City Hall's energy use, especially during the spring and falls. Obviously, during the summer and winter, that may not be the case, but that should be coming onboard first quarter at latest second quarter of next year. The Public Safety Building HVAC, Schneider shared with me that that's obviously been one of the more challenging of the, of the various projects that they've been involved with, but they do, they are pleased to say that the second, third floor work has been completed. Those floors have been turned back over to the PD, and I know that the PD right now are still kind of crammed into that upper floor as well, some of the second floor, but those have been completed, and we look to have the bottom floor by the end of January completed. So we're, I know the PD will be very glad to have that project completed. The demonstration solar projects, if you recall, we had a few of those. We were going to do a solar bench and a solar tree. The solar bench was installed almost a year ago at Heritage Park. It is functional. We do have some advertising plates that we can put on there, and we're, and we're working with Schneider to see what exactly we want on that, whether we want some information to share with the users or whether we want to put some news or whatever on that. So that has been completed. The solar tree at Edwell River Park, they're going to, they're going to be completing some structure, some foundation structure work on that this week, and we hope to have that solar tree completed within the next couple of weeks. The interactive kiosk and displays here at City Hall, I appreciate Ms. Penley, and I know Lauren, Communications Department, they've worked going back and forth with Schneider to, to have the information, to decide on what information is going to go on this kiosk and get all of that finalized, and we hope to have that up and running January, February of next year. The streetlight audit has been completed. Schneider has told me that right now they're just trying to process all of that information and put it into basically what they've called a digestible format for us to understand so that we can use it, because as you recall, there are a lot of streetlights in the city that are owned by the city. There are many streetlights that are owned by the energy provider, whether it's Georgia Power or one of the EMCs that provides service. So we're putting that into a digestible format, and they'll be coming forward soon with that information. Our voice over RP, voice over IP has been completed, and I'm glad to say, at least my personal experience and for those that I've spoken with, I think we worked some of the kinks out with it, with that project, and it's functioning as intended right now. I know we'll still have some kinks to work out, but right now, we're, we're running on that project. And then last, but certainly not least, our sustainability plan. On April eighteenth, twenty twenty-four, council approved that five-year plan, and once again, I want to give my, tip my hat to Kelly Penley and the Sustainability Committee for working on that. I know they worked with Schneider developing that green initiative, and I know that there's still a lot more to be, to accomplish on that, but that is a five-year plan, and, and we'll hope, we hope to see the fruits of those labors over the coming, coming years and, and beyond. So if there's any questions that I can answer from City Council right now, I'd be more than happy to do so. But again, Jen's going to be here in February to give a comprehensive presentation, so if there's anything specific about those projects that you'd like to learn more, please let me know, and I'll make sure that I have that information on hand at that time.
Thank you, Mr. Ingram. Appreciate the updates. Mr. Waterman?
Mr. Ingram, a few questions. The, as far as the Public Safety Building is concerned, I know we had two pretty significant storms here over the last three or four months. Did that, did those storms push back any of the timelines?
It did.
For that building?
Yes, sir.
And did Schneider, was Schneider the ones responsible for, for that repair work?
No, sir. We have engaged a mitigation company, Southeast Restoration, to do those repairs. They came in and mitigated the water infiltration. Then they removed all of the furniture, then they took down sheet rock, and then they reinstalled and renovated that. And we've turned those invoices into our insurance carrier.
Okay.
Yes, yes. Yes, good point. And the damage was not directly a part of Schneider's project and did affect them. It did delay them for a few weeks, but probably not materially.
I think, just, I know you mentioned that Ms. Miller will be here to do a more comprehensive update in February, did you say?
Yes, sir.
A request that, I'd like to just make the request that the way that things are, I guess segmented, you have energy in buildings, land use, green space, water and waste management. If, if the presentation is going to be, I guess, wrapped around those headings, when it comes to the energy in buildings, I'd like to see something that says, especially since City Hall HVAC seems to be a complete holistically, what have we spent so far and what have, and if there are any savings that have been realized?
And I, I do know it's, it was a overall a ten-plus million dollar project, and I know how much we spent so far to date, and, and that's around seven, almost eight million, seven point seven, seven point eight million so far. Regarding the results, and, and I may not be the person to speak to this, and of course, Jen, Ms. Miller certainly may be able to, but I know some of those analytics that are going to, are, are going to be down the road. You know, it's tough, and I've kept track of the, for example, our solar array here on the parking deck to analyze it, and it, it's tough to see the results in a short window. You know, you have to look at these over a year or even years to be able to, to tell, okay, our, our power consumption overall has dropped twenty percent, thirty percent, fifty percent, whatever. But I'll certainly bring, bring that topic of discussion up to Ms. Miller, make sure that we at least, you know, speak to that.
Yeah, and, and just using that as an example, but, you know, of all of those topics, the overall, like you see, like an aggregated overall benefit of the program when, when she comes in February. I believe, yeah, that, that's all I have. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions for Mr. Ingram? Thank you for the updates.
All right, thank you.
Did y'all have any other questions for me?
Okay. Your excuse, Mr. Peppers. Any council introduced items? Double checking. Here none? Just a couple of quick items. Didn't want to report that this afternoon, we hosted fellow elected officials, other mayors, the county commissioner here at City Hall, along with Mr. Peppers, Mr. Dyer, Mr. Ingram was in attendance as well, to discuss House Bill five eighty-one and tax relief to homeowners. So, Mr. Weaver, the elves are hard at work. We did discuss FOST and host. There is a meeting of the local delegation with the cities and county next week, and we are going to be following up on our discussions, pending some of those discussions, while we hear back from them. But we are, are looking at the best path forward there and look forward to updating you guys. But today's meeting was just to get everyone on board, make sure they understood the task at hand and the schedules involved in that, and, and hopefully discussing a, an agreeable path forward for everyone and, and all the guidelines that come along with that new legislation. So hopefully, we'll be reporting back on that, so. So, next item is appointments to city boards and committees. As you know, we have several that are becoming vacant at the end of the year, and I wanted to, and I'm responsible for a majority of those, and so I wanted to tonight, go ahead and make my appointments and get council approval on those so we can be ready to start the new year and get to work and keep the good, great work going. So, for the Canton Housing Authority, we had Ms. Tanish Welch, whose term expires. Tanish fulfilled a previous short term there, so I've talked to her. She's very much interested in continuing her service, so I would like to reappoint Tanish Welch to the Canton Housing Authority. The Canton Main Street Board, we have two members whose term is expiring, Brandy Russell and Jack Champagne. I want to thank them for their service and their hard work on the Main Street Board. The Main Street Board has forwarded names of two new board members, Amber Plamro with POPS and Ella Murdock with Southernite Interiors to replace those two board members. They've agreed to term, to, to serve. Downtown Development Authority, we have Jose Luna, whose term is expiring. Want to again thank him for his service, and I would like to appoint Lee Oliver with Thrive Co-Working Space to fill his position. Jennifer Hughes' term is expiring. She's the current chair of the DDA. Talked to her. She's very much willing and interested in continuing for another appointment, so I would like to reappoint Jennifer Hughes to the DDA. And then Tammy Perkins' term is expiring at the end of the year. Again, thanks to her for her contributions, and I'd like to point Ms. Carmen Slaughter to that position. Carmen is a downtown resident, and as we, DDA considers more residential products, projects and infill in downtown, I think it's important to have a resident. She's also our current liaison to the Library Board. And then Historic Preservation, Preservation Commission, Ms. Addie Price, her term expires at the end of the year. I've spoken to her. She's done great work on the commission, and she's willing and excited about continuing, so I'd like to reappoint Ms. Addie Price to the Historic Preservation Commission. We had a couple of other appointments that are open. I don't believe we have anything to do tonight. Does anyone like to add anything to that slate? Yes, I did poach Ms. Slaughter from Ms. McGrew's appointment to Tourism Board, but we're, we're working on hopefully a great replacement there, so. Thank you, Ms. McGrew, for lending that, so. So, I'd like to make those nominations. Ms. Fortner, did you get those? Okay? Okay. Is there a second for those nominations?
Second.
Okay. All in favor of those appointments, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? All members present voted for those appointments. Again, that gets the majority, and hopefully, in the next meeting or so, we can get the last one or two filled there, so. Awesome. And thanks to our boards and commissions for all the great work they do to help us advance our roadmap for success. I believe that's all I have tonight. I know we have members and colleagues up here who are not feeling well, and, and I appreciate your patience and your productivity, and with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? We are adjourned. Have a good evening, everyone. Stay warm.